It's six thirty, I call the meeting to order. First up is public...
Now, what's he doing?
Hello? Excuse me, gentlemen, the meeting has started.
Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. Public comment, if you have any comment for the board, please come to the podium, state your name and address, keep your comments to three minutes or less and address your comments to the board and not two minutes, if anybody has anything to let us know.
Paul Gazowski, forty-six, Langford Lane. Being a second-generation American, the son of Eastern European immigrants, I just want to state that it's hurtful when members of the elected board exercise a lack of tolerance and inclusive attitudes toward all Americans regardless of their backgrounds. And I find that unacceptable, and I just want to state that for the record, that to me, that's unacceptable. And I think that the board's action at the last meeting perhaps was not, maybe it was necessary to take that approach, but I don't think that it went far enough to deep enough. I think it's an egregious transgression. My second comment deals with the Town Center Vision Committee and the report. And I will just say at this point in time that it would be, it would be an error to perhaps miss another vote cycle because of new elements being introduced into the study. So I think we need to be mindful, the fact that, you know, October is the time when you've really got to gear up to get ready for any kind of vote. If we don't, if we aren't ready by that period of time because of additional needs and additional studies, then we will miss a whole cycle again. And that's, we've studied it long enough, it's time to move it forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is public comments. Nope? Item number three, Peter McDonald. Mr. McDonald?
I'm here tonight, I guess in a way it's partly for Veterans Resort Chapel, but it's for veterans. I submitted to you a multi-page document or letter, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I hope you put it in the minutes, or at least I'm requesting that you put it in the minutes, so the townspeople know what's going on. I am a veteran, United States Marine. The town's gone to great lengths to discredit me, at least that's the word around town. Somebody from the selectmen's office years ago contacted the commander of the VFW and had the VFW do research on me to find out if I was a combat veteran or not, because they wanted to discredit me. I am a combat veteran, although I don't claim it, and my DD-214 does not show it because I was in Laos or Cambodia, countries we were not in. And I did fourteen months to an eight congress across Laos, Cambodia, and to Vietnam. I don't want to be called a combat veteran. I have no need to be called a combat veteran. And if the town wants to discredit me, let them, because I stand by my record as a United States Marine. The VFW went so far as to tell me to stop the Veterans Resort Chapel because the selectmen do not want the Veterans Resort Chapel in Lee. I refuse, and they told me if I refused, they were going to have my membership, my lifelong membership, and the VFW revoked, they had it revoked. Then they had it revoked nationally. I find that very offensive, that the town of Lee would go to such great lengths to do something like that, to stop somebody from having a church that helps homeless veterans. In 1980, I was ordained a minister after going to ministry school in California, and I started a ministry to help homeless veterans on the streets of New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Maine. And I have been doing that for over forty years now, since 1980. And you have a record here, and you have many copies of it in many different departments in Lee, of my ministry certificate that was recorded in 1980 in the county DTO records. I believe it's book four, book one-one-four-one, page six-seven-three, or six-three-one, or something like that. So it's well documented. But what I'm here tonight for is the town of Lee took me to court, or took the Veterans Resort Chapel to court, and you had the court say that our ministry, our church, was not a real church. Our church is registered with the state and federal government, the IRS. We have a New Hampshire Better Business Bureau registration number. We have my minister's degree, we have ministers on the property at the chapel, and we help homeless veterans. We help homeless veterans through God to come home and come back to real life. And I don't know if you know what it's like to be a combat veteran and come home to a world that you don't belong in, but it's a very difficult road. I have lived that road for over fifty years now, or close to fifty years. So you can say I don't, I'm a liar, or whatever you want to call me, and I don't care. I'm not here for myself, I'm here to help homeless combat veterans. I came back alive, and I shouldn't have. And I'm not going to tell you the stories because there's no need for it. You don't need to know what we go through over there. You don't need to know what it's like to live through combat. Now, you took us to court, and you supposedly won the case, but you put a lien on the property at 101 Stepping Stone Road to take our church away from us. Now, the records are here, you put the lien on the wrong parties. You put them on somebody else. And now you're asked the court to rule that it was just a spelling error, a mistake. Well, the court ruled, and the copies of the court decisions are in here, every single one of them, the court ruled in the Veterans Resort Chapel name, there's an S on the end of veteran. That is not what our corporation, our church is. Our corporation, our church is the Veterans Singular Resort Chapel. So you put the lien on the wrong people. You even put the lien on Peter McDonald and spelled the name with a capital D, and that's not me. So you've got the lien on property owned by different people than the lien is against, and you're trying to take the property. It can't work. This is America. There's a court ruling, even if the court ruled that you can change the name in the middle, there's a protocol you have to go through. And you're not going to win this case. It's just not going to happen. I wish I would be alive to see the case to the finish, but I have Agent Orange suspected cancer, and it's through my entire body and it's stage four. They gave me thirty days to live, March first. I have outdone that by sixty days so far, so I could end any day. So I'm not going to get to see my church help veterans, and that was my dream. That is why I came back from Vietnam, Laos, and Cambodia. That is what I was set on this earth to do, at least I believe. So I am asking you to rethink your decision, and our church helping homeless veterans should not be something that the town of Lee wants to get rid of. We are people, we fought for this country, and for what you're doing, I just find totally disrespectful. And I hope there's a lot of people listening to me talk tonight, and I hope you put what I wrote in the minutes, because veterans deserve, the people of the United States of America, to know what you are putting us through here in Lee. And I have no mercy for anybody who does this to veterans. I mean, I believe everyone of you should be taken to the wringer for what you're doing. And you can deny it, you can say you didn't do it, you can do whatever you want, but the record is right here, and it's stamped in court writings of what the town of Lee is doing. And it's just plain wrong. It's just plain wrong. We didn't fight for this country to come back and be... I'll skip that word. Okay, I'm starting to lose it, and I feel like I'm going to pass out, so I have to go, so, thank you.
Item number four, Steve Bullock. Highway supervisor. Nine-one-one? Call them, please.
Just pass out for a second, I'm fine. Is anyone here?
An elderly gentleman who has fallen and needs assistance. Twenty George Bennett Road, it's the public safety complex in Lee, second floor. A gentleman was at a selectmen's meeting, he left the room and then fell. I did not see it, but I believe that's what happened. Somebody is, yes. She was down, sixty, seventy, I'm not sure. I believe it was weak.
He's walking.
Yes, yes. He's walking. Thank you. He just walked away.
Yeah, he went out with...
You went home with... You could tell that that would be fire. Where is it? Did he leave?
He went down the elevator.
Tell them to tell us, though, okay?
Can you tell them now, uh, the fire is already here?
We're at recess for a few minutes.
Yep.
Item number four, Steve Bullock.
Here to ask permission to sign a contract with CWS Guard Rail, so we can fix the guardrail that got damaged by the car crash on Jenkins Road, or sorry, Gary Road. It's like three hundred and eighty-five feet total rail. It's all cable rail now, and you're not allowed to replace cable rail anymore, it's obsolete. And ninety percent of it's rotten anyway, needed to get replaced, this just kind of... Move the timeline up a little bit. CWS does all the state work, they have the state contract to do state guardrail repair. We've used them before to do the guardrail over by Randy's house on the bridge, and if we need guardrail posts, that's where we go get them. So all the guardrail posts at Little River Park have all been purchased from them, too. They're probably the best company around to do it. A lot of other people do do guardrail, but they're fence companies, and they don't do that good of a job. So I have money in the budget that I haven't spent this year in the guardrail line, because I've been holding onto it, waiting, and I'd like to move it, if I can get the contract signed, we'll move it to next year, so I have both combined to do the project, to do the guardrail. Sort of requesting.
Questions? Is this the entire list?
It has to be, you can't just do one part.
In fact, I was hoping just do the whole thing, I'm watching.
I'd like to do that, and there's a little bit across the street on the other side of the road between two driveways, and you just do it all, be done with it. And just, the area's done, it's upgraded, we don't have to worry about it again unless someone runs into it.
Mr. Brown?
Just, just for my knowledge, when someone damages property like that, or automobile accident, whatever, there's no insurance?
This person did not have insurance, I've already looked into it. So the other option on that end is when they order renewing their license, you put a, you have them put a lien on the license, and then they have to pay to fix it before they can get their license back. And that's, I don't know, by the time you're done paying the lawyers for all that and everything else, I don't know if it's worth it, for the short little stretch they have. I mean, in reality, they probably took out five poles and broke two pieces of cable rail, but in taking out the five poles, they snapped the head pole off at the beginning because it was in such bad shape, so... Normally, like if it was a piece of guardrail up now, and they had insurance, and you had CWS come do it, they would take the insurance information and then go after the insurance company a lot, like if someone runs into your car, type thing. But as soon as this one got hit, I went to see a person who does not have car insurance, so, okay.
Item number seven? I move to allow the highway supervisor to enter a contract with CWS fence and guardrail to replace the guardrail on Gary Road, funds to come out of the 2019, 2020 highway agreement on the second, second, any discussion? How those... So you can encumber those monies? And we'll do it to...
I think his intent is to get a contract signed in this fiscal year.
So that will encumber it for them?
Will encumber it this year.
But he'll have access to it next?
Yes.
Okay. Item number five, the TCBC would like to give you a short presentation. We were tasked to come up with recommendations. So Mr. Bullock is going to give us a little doggy point. One, two, three, let's go.
Looks good to me, and we saw enough light from the sun. Okay, so the Town Center Vision Committee asked the select board for some time to investigate options for going forward. We had a couple of goals in this, or few goals, I should say. One was to reexamine our previous recommendation, namely the one-story municipal office building plan that was presented in the 2019 warrant, to share how we thought, thought through alternatives to this plan, including some options considered by the Facilities Committee and previous committees, and to recommend a path forward to the select board. So without changing the broad parameters of the approach of one-story freestanding office building, we first asked ourselves what can be improved in this plan. This plan needs to be changed to correct for the building's gross square feet, that's what GSF means, that's the first acronym of any. The valid Brenzinger architects called for a building of forty-eight hundred and forty gross square feet. This didn't account for all the programmatic needs. As surveyed, our figure adds in the proper grossing factor and arrives at fifty-three hundred gross square feet for the adjusted price of one point eight-six-six million dollars. That gives us the first two options that we considered. If the PZB, the planning and zoning, stays in the annex, a building that accommodates most of the space needs, but needs renovation, it would save seven point six percent on the cost of a one-story building. Here I should note that we haven't determined the cost for renovating the annex, but we wanted to compare or show the select board these two options. What if PZB remains out, as it is one function that could stay where it is? I should also note that we don't have any site costs in this presentation, or the cost to renovate any other existing structures or anything else. All we're going to be talking about is the cost of building a new office building. So we asked ourselves, should the PZB be moved into a new building? What are the pros and cons of moving the annex, or of moving the PZB in or out of the annex? And I'm sorry, I have a one-week-old son, so I'm going to be stammering through this because I'm on like five hours of sleep, so, I'm sorry, everybody. So what's going in favor of moving the PZB to a new building? Keeps all the town staff together, there's many advantages that come with this, less walking between buildings, more efficient workplace, there'd be one security system, other systems could be saved by having everybody located in one building. And it would make the annex available for commission and committee work, which would be especially needed if the town hall is to be renovated after an office building is built. Going against the idea of the PZB moving, of course, there's a larger building footprint, that means increased cost. But the, the cost of moving the PZB, or of moving PZB into the new building would only raise the cost of a building by about seven point six percent. So that's why we, we don't recommend keeping PZB in the annex, but rather keeping it in the new office building. So we examined other, other alternatives. I'm realizing that my slides are slightly out of order here, so bear with me. The other alternatives we looked at were a town hall addition, this had been brought up during the previous presentation by several people who attended those sessions, building on Stevens Field, a two-story municipal office building, and using the parish house. Here again are those numbers, PZB in or out of that office building, and that difference is less than seven percent. So let's tackle those other options. First is, is a town hall addition even viable? What's going forward against this idea? In the pro column, we have grant funding could be used for the renovation of the town hall, and that could be used partially fund a town hall addition project. Going against this idea is that the tool shed with the tram room would need to be moved because that's immediately behind the existing town hall. The wetland and the side setbacks would need variances because any new building would violate both. It presents limited room for expansion, essentially you could build an addition, but you could build nothing else after that. And temporary office space would be needed to house the existing town hall staff, and it would further crowd the town center. To illustrate exactly how much it would crowd the town center, this is what an office building would look like when added onto the town hall. It's not the two thousand square feet that has been talked about, that have been talked about in previous committees. We've laid out several possibilities to what, as to what an addition could look like. In blue, you can see two-story additions, there's multiple boxes because, of course, you can make a rectangle of the amount of gross square feet we're talking about in several different sizes. For a one-story option, there's really only one way to do it, and that's to extend straight back from the existing town hall. You wouldn't want to rotate that one ninety degrees, as it would block the entire front of the library, being what we deem an unacceptable option. So given that this, given that these options violate all these setbacks, have all of these various disadvantages, and don't confer much in the way of square feet into the building, we don't recommend this option, especially if the select board wants to maintain the town hall as a meeting space. Then there's no reason to locate an office building next to the existing town hall. As I said during previous deliberations on the planning, many people brought up Stevens Field, why don't we just build on Stevens Field, it's there. I want to quickly revisit that option. When the Facilities Committee looked at this as an option, the main point in favor of Stevens Field was that the land was available, but this has been rendered moot by the purchase of the church property in 2018. Going against Stevens Field is that it's not part of the existing town center, so you would separate town services into different campuses. It has fewer economies of scale going for it, as we talked about in previous presentations, there'd be Commonwealth, Septic, Communications, propane infrastructure, you wouldn't get that by building on Stevens Field. The only thing that you would be able to share is parking with a public safety complex, but both police and fire have asked that there not be parking between those services, as in you'd have people spilling over from municipal functions into public safety areas. It also eliminates a sports field. You can argue about whether or not Stevens Field is a great sports field, but it is a sports field. So for those reasons, we don't recommend Stevens Field as an option, given that the church property is there, its one big advantage is gone. So let's examine a two-story office building. What are the pros and cons here? Are you seeing the format? A two-story office building would represent a smaller footprint, that uses land more efficiently and results in less impervious surface. It has less unused basement space, the one-story building has a very large basement, only some of which can be used, because it does not call for an elevator in that design. A multi-story building would require an elevator, and we would extend that elevator to the basement, this would make the entire building accessible, not just the first floor, and therefore has fewer restrictions on its use. It also creates an office with some room to grow. Because of the way that the functions divide between floors, in our conception, the town clerk and tax collector resides on the first floor along with the PZB, given that they have the most day-to-day traffic, and the selectmen's office would be on the second floor, but the selectmen's office functions would take up all the space available. So it does give the town a building with a little bit of extra space. Going against this plan, an elevator is added to the cost. So let's compare the cost of a one-story to two-story building. We cited a one-story adjusted to the right gross square feet as one point eight-six-six million dollars, a two-story office building would be one point nine-five. So we think this is a viable option, so it's still on the shortlist. What about the parish house? Can the parish house be turned from a thirty-six thousand dollar teardown liability into a historically significant asset? Let me pop back here. The short answer to this question is that we can't say for certain yet, but the Heritage Commission is actively pursuing both restoration advice and funding. The commission will meet with Andrew Cushing from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance on Monday, June tenth, to discuss assessing, or to discuss restoration costs and explore grants and other funding options. Depending on their findings, the parish house could become an interesting option. Here's why we think so. The parish house would make use of an existing town asset. As I said, it can pursue grant funding. It reduces the size of a new building, if part of the square footage of the parish house can be used for town functions. Therefore, it reduces the cost of any new construction. It has greater curb appeal, as it fits with the colloquial architecture of New England. In the con column here is that the cost of a renovation is unknown at this time. And it would need a side setback variance. That's illustrated here. What we're envisioning is a large addition with a connector running between. This would fit the big house, little house, back house, barn style of New England architecture, and would make use of the parsonage. And there you can see in blue the side setback variance that would be needed. The cost we've been able to calculate so far makes this comparable to the one-story and two-story options. This includes an estimate for the connector, that does not include the cost of renovation, which will have a more accurate idea of it after the tenth. So that leaves the two-story office building and parish house still in contention here. So all of the options we have on the table still, one-story office building, two-story office building, or a two-story office building offset with space from the parish house. They're so close in cost that we recommend the select board allow us to investigate all three of these options further. We'd ask that the select board extend our charge to June thirtieth of 2020, to see through investigating these options and bringing something to the voters. We'd like to come back to the select board with more precise numbers on all three of these options, including more precise operating costs and numbers on energy efficiency. So that ends my slideshow. Was that faster than last time, Scott?
I didn't really did time you.
I think it was twelve minutes, so...
That's great.
If you have any questions, many members of the committee are here to answer them.
Does the board have any questions from this TCBC?
I don't really have any questions, Chair Lloyd. Number one, I absolutely agree that planning and zoning should move into the new building. I mean, one of the big benefits was to try and get everybody consolidated in a building where they can interact with one another relatively quickly, and so, so I think that's definitely the right decision. So I think that's definitely the right decision as far as the combination of people. I'm personally concerned about the parish house, but I guess we'll wait and see what the costs and so turn out to be. It's not just the cost which we already have, but the acquisition. It's the sustaining cost for the building over a long period of time. How much, if we refurbish it, it's still going to be a parish house. What are we going to do? Are we going to move the office in there permanently or are we just temporarily while we redo the town hall? If we're going to put $100,000 into the parish house, that's just a number. And then turn around and put another $100,000 into town hall, we spent $200,000, but we're still only going to get one place to put the people to make a decision on. So I just think that you all have a tough, have a tough road to go right now.
The plan would be to renovate the parish house and then put some of the particular functions in that particular facility, specifically on the first floor. The connector would have two floors to it, so the elevator would be in the main section, and then you could use the connector to access the second floor of the parish house, but it would be utilized. The other thing in terms of, it was mentioned in the presentation in terms of Andrew Cushing, he's coming on the 10th. He's from the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance. He has money, since the parish house is on the seven disabled list, he has money to pay for an assessment. So based on whatever your needs are in that particular facility, his office has money to have somebody come in and do an assessment. Okay, you want it to be this, whatever happens to be. He will do a report and tell you specifically, this is how much it is to renovate it to whatever you want it to be, and that's something that the town would have to pay for. That also potentially gives you access to grants for L chip money and things like that to pay for up to 50 percent of it, so.
Just one more comment. I have heard now two or three times that the Grange is entering into the equation relative to a building, a building that's in trouble. And what are they going to do about the Grange relative to either refurbish it or lose it or whatever? So there might have to be some consideration on what our position's going to be with helping the Grange move.
It's the issue is their membership is down, and the state Grange is taking notice of that. So the local members are concerned about the state coming in and saying, oh, you don't have enough membership, we're going to take the facility. Most likely, they would try to sell it. They would not give it. So that's a concern to the members, and one of the things is, you know, maybe they need to get more members. It costs $15. I think it's $15 a year, something like that. But the membership is down. I think they had 14 or something, but something to consider.
And with respect to, actually, I prefer the two-story over the one-story because it does take a less footprint. And elevator, we talk about, it's a lot of money. Well, we put an elevator in this facility after we built it. It would make all courts fully accessible. We wouldn't have to deal with, you can't go here, you can't go there kind of thing. So in some ways, I do prefer that. The thing that wasn't mentioned, I'll bring up the parish house again. I know it's, we don't have enough time to really study it. Parking issue, it's kind of off to the side. Before we had the municipal building, there was lots of parking. Did you take that into consideration as an issue? Or is it not an issue? John, you want to get to that?
Actually, we drew two possibilities for the addition to the parish house. The blue one there, as drawn, does intrude into the side setback, but it could be rotated so that it doesn't intrude at all. The other option is, was sketched in orange, and that makes the connection on the gable end of the parish house, again, with the same size. This is actually drawn at 40 by 60 feet, but the aspect ratio of the footprint is a TBD. And the addition could be as drawn, or it could be moved closer to the street, and it allows for parking behind the building. And in fact, if it was brought closer to the street, the parking in the entrance would be behind the building, so you wouldn't have parking in front of the building. And the parking would prob, from what we presented previously, the parking would probably divide into effectively two lots, one of them closer to the library in Old Town Hall, and then a piece of the connector road going to additional parking near the municipal office building.
One of the things we did hear here, John, is when we, the original one we presented in March, there was people that were not favorable to the large park area. So this would also split it up into separate, not that far away, it's not that far to walk, but they didn't like, it looked like, one of the comments was, it looked like Walmart of the parking, but, you know. But we couldn't connect up with the church parking lot because that would change things and DOT would not, they'd make us do all kinds of things. But if we access it from one of the two points by the town hall or the one that's proposed by, just to the side of the annex, then the parking, go in, go to the left, do you go to the library in the current town hall, or go to the right and go to this proposed new facility?
Did the, this addition to the parish house, is that two-floor or one-floor?
It's all two-story.
Two-story.
So the addition, that main part, is two-story with full basement and three-stop elevator. And the connector is also two-story, but without a basement. So that by using the elevator in the large addition, you can access, have ADA access to both the second and the first floor of the parish house.
I was going to say, otherwise you got to put an elevator in, can't you?
Oh, not two elevators.
I thought you can.
No. And in trying to work out where the, where the functions are located within the addition and the parish house, and this, of course, is subject to change in big ways, but in that scenario, I have 113 square feet unsigned on the second floor of the addition, and 67 square feet on the first floor of the parish house, and 375 square feet on the second floor of the parish house. So with the selectman's office on the second floor, you then have a question of how do you want to move things around? There's some things from the selectman's office that you'd rather move into the second floor of the parish house. And this is based on just the room areas that are there now, and those are not the most efficient.
The other thing to mention is the two-story option, not doing anything with the parish house, is we allow. One of the thoughts was to keep the two most visited groups, either it's PCB, selectman's office, town clerk. I think it's pretty much town clerk is number one, but whoever is the most, second most busy, they be on the first floor as well, so less traffic has to go up to the second floor, whatever. But I guess what we'd like to ask you, permission, is to proceed with these three, get more information at Costi, and get back to you, give us like the summer to work on this, and get back to you in the fall, and give us enough time to make a decision on how to move forward. The thought would be to have something in front of the voters in March. So the only other thing just to mention, we'd like to, we've got some information, or the information we got from the things we did this last year from Valley Bachelor and our two consultants, we would like to have access to a few funds, not tons of money, to go back to those two consultants and have them answer some questions as we get more to the process. Originally, they were like 5,000 each. I don't think we need as that much money because there was a premium because the information like we can have. So, but that's the only other thing we'd ask for, access to some funds.
I don't see any problem going with the extension, using those funds, because I think that the committee's done a wonderful job of at least taking four down to two. Hopefully, we'll come down to one so we can move forward. And I do agree with Paul saying we need to get something and not lose a cycle, that's for sure. I'd want to lose a whole year again. I'd like to move forward.
I agree. I agree. I have no problem. Obviously, the right thing to do is to move forward with it. It's the only direction we can go.
You cannot go backwards.
So definitely, we should do that. And as far as the consultant phase?
Yes.
And we asked the town ministry to work us a new charge until next June?
Yes.
In essence, giving us?
Till next June?
Yeah, the year 2020.
I thought you said the end of the summer.
No, 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 no. It's a charge for the year. We'll give you information by the end of the summer, but, because usually charges are like a year. That will take us through, because I assume after we give you the charge, after we give you the information, you want us to continue in terms of?
Yes.
All of participation and stuff like that.
But our current charge was at the end of this month.
We need to have full agreement on the end of the summer to be able to make a decision and move forward.
Yeah, but the committee can stay intact and follow.
Yeah. So you want to say the end of August? What do you think, Mr. Brown?
I think that that's actually the select board's call.
Well, we're the volunteers. Do you think?
We're the volunteers, but they need to make, they're the people that are involved in the budget process and what's going to go on the ballot, and they need to make the call as to, you know, at this point, we need to have it narrowed down to one, and you need to be developing in greater detail whatever it is they think we're missing in presentation materials so that we're ready for budget hearings and so forth.
That starts in Septemberish, so.
So if we did this in August, at that point, we'll make a decision which way to go, or you make the recommendation which way to go, and either we'll confirm or not.
So end of August?
Yes, end of August.
Okay. So we can have a charge that says that, we'll explore these three options?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number six, Julie Glover, town minister.
We're actually a little behind in terms of putting up the annual fuel bed. Just want to touch base with the board. We really wouldn't be combining the school and the church this year because they're on propane, and we're just one year into a three-year propane contract. So whatever bid you see, we include the church and the school.
So it's just the heating oil?
It's just the heating oil and the offer of diesel. Another option would be to just see if we can extend the current contract with Hartman Oil. I know we've got some issues, I believe, with them, but, you know, we send that bid out to eight or 10 vendors, and we get a response from three. So I think with the board's permission, I may reach out to Hartman and just see if they're interested in extending the current contract.
Yeah, because then that was done pretty good with Hartman.
Yeah.
Consist without the other.
Or even out of the three, there was no bid in there for one of them.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I agree.
Thank you. Just want to touch base on the legal budgets. We have $4,600 in what's called the selectman's legal budget left and about $4900 in planning its own. So we may squeak by this year. We probably though have two months worth of bills yet to come. So as, as I promised, I was just going to keep the board apprised of that. So far, fingers crossed, you know, we might be okay.
Okay.
And that's everything I have.
Item number seven, I move to accept the agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have lots of things to sign?
Yeah.
Got watch.
Nope. You signed the manifest already.
Yeah.
All minutes?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so. I need some light.
All set?
Yeah.
I move to, I move to enter a non-public session, no, jeez. New Hampshire RIA 91-A goal in three, two sections A and C. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? No. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. LeCours?
Aye.
All right. I move to seal the non-public meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? No. Mr. Brown? Yes? Mr. LeCours?
Aye. Take the lead, aye.
Yes.
I said aye.
That's what I said, aye. I'm giving your aye.
Item number 10, miscellaneous unfinished business. Is, I have one request, and really, I should have bid it to Steve, but if I can ask the town minister to do it. Can you have Steve put on his list to mow the grass at the parish house?
I already asked him that, but sure.
Okay. Well, the last time I looked, it still hasn't been mowed, so.
No, he mowed it.
Oh, the last time I looked, if he's done it?
I went by it, I went by it yesterday, and it was mowed. Yeah. No, I think they, I think they took care of it.
Never mind. Never mind.
And could you ask Karen Ross to come to the next meeting to update us what's going on? You know, there's a lot of activity going on, but it's all small stuff around the town. Nothing big, but I thought it'd be good for her to come in and just summarize some things.
Okay. And as was mentioned in the presentation, the meeting on the 10th at 7:00 PM is here if you want to hear about funding options and stuff like that.
It's the same evening as Dr. Morse's.
Yes, so Dr. Morse's thing is at 5:00 to 6:30.
6:30?
5:00 to 7:00. We should be out of there by 6:30, and then this week at 7:00. That's here. The other thing, tomorrow, the conservation commission, I don't know if you're interested in going, is doing a walk in Clay Lane to look at that, you know, that whole thing in terms of the gravel and stuff like that. So that's at 3:00 o'clock if you're interested to go to that. I think that's it.
I would like to mention that Lee Market opened up last week, a very successful market, I think. A lot of vendors there, a lot of people there, new vendors, pottery makers, we saw some crafts there, and very, very well attended and very well put together.
Except the bread guy didn't have buns.
Oh.
He had bread, but not buns. He said he got tired of making the buns. My son is not very happy with him, so. We bought some bowls and they're the same thing. He says they're same thing, just a different shape.
Just break them off.
Yeah, that's basically what he said, so. But yeah, there was a whole bunch of people there, so.
Yeah, no, it was very nice.
It was good. So. Anything else? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
Second? All those in favor?